Hey, good morning, everybody. And welcome to the Plano Chamber Collin College Board of Trustees Candidate Forum. My name is Michael Lawson, Senior Manager of Boeing Global Engagement at the Boeing Company, as well as Vice Chair of the Plano Chambers Board of Directors. I'm looking forward to moderating this morning's conversation. We appreciate you joining in us and we learn as we learn more from our candidates from Collin College. Before we move to our panel, I would love to thank our presenting sponsor, AT&amp;T. While AT&amp;T is unable to be here today, they are a strong proponent of everything that we do at the Chamber. And so we were very thankful for it for them. So, thank you to AT&amp;T. Now, while our candidates join me on the screen, I will review the format of today's forum. Unfortunately, Misty Erby from Place Eight is unable to join us this morning due to a work conflict. So, the candidates are organized in order based on the place they're running for. Each candidate will have two minutes to give an opening statement. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question, and they will also have one minute for a closing remark. Each candidate will be asked the same question, and Christine will be our timekeeper, as she will hold up a countdown clock at the end at the start of each candidate's response. So, we're going to jump right into it here. So, before we jump into questions, let's begin with opening remarks. Please remember, you will have two minutes to respond, and we will begin with Helen Chang, candidate for Place Seven with your opening statement. Helen, over to you.
Hi, I'm Helen Chang, and I'm running for Collin College Board of Trustees, Place Seven. I have a bachelor's degree in economics from UC Berkeley and a master's degree in public policy from Harvard. I've lived in Texas for 20 years, the last 14 here in Plano. My children are both in high school and are products of Plano's excellent public school system. My husband is a local, is the CEO of a local business that employs about 100 area residents. I am currently a full-time community college economics professor, after working in the public, nonprofit, and corporate sectors. And as a stint as a stay-at-home mom, I started my teaching career at Collin 11 years ago. I teach at a different community college now. With my background in education, economics, and public policy, I know I will be an effective trustee for you. The structure of our economy has changed dramatically over the last few decades. The loss of manufacturing jobs and the growth of the gig economy and part-time employment have made it increasingly harder for workers to achieve economic security without a college degree. Community colleges are so important in helping students get those degrees and other important workforce skills without massive debt. These colleges are instrumental in helping us rebuild the American middle class. What happens at Collin College affects all of us. Collin provides businesses with the labor force they need to remain competitive, and Collin's graduates contribute to our economy and society in innumerable ways. It is vital that we maintain Collin's excellence. Over and over again, I've heard that that is our goal for Collin College, to be the best community college in the country. To achieve this, we need to hire the best and the brightest. Unfortunately, under the current, the current leadership's attack on free speech is driving away talent, making it difficult to attract and retain the best. This in turn deprives our students, I believe strongly in the mission of community colleges, and want to work to strengthen them. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Now, Jim Orr.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jim Orr. I'm a 21-year resident of Collin County, a current trustee. I'm the Board Secretary and a candidate for the position, of course. I'm asking you to keep Collin College strong and reelect me for my second term. I grew up on a working farm in Wisconsin, so I know what it's like to get up at 4:00 AM and take care of livestock before going to school for the day. This set my work ethic that carries me through to now. I came to Texas in 1985 on a full academic scholarship to Texas A&amp;M University, where I earned an electrical engineering degree. Also have an MBA from Washington State with a focus on organizational behavior. A&amp;M's a great school, and I'm proud of my degree. But by far, the most important thing that happened is I met a wonderful Texas girl who actually agreed to marry me. We've been married over 30 years now and have three children together, all of whom attended Collin College in one form or another. And we figure between the three of them, Collin College has saved us over $50,000 in educational costs. Collin's a great resource, continually delivering on the promise of low cost and high quality. And we do this by managing to a tight budget and carefully managing the operation. During my first run, two things continually came up: expansion of trades education and geographic coverage. We've got an excellent technical campus. We're opening three new locations, and we continue to expand our programs. And we'll make sure we're ready for the 2 million Collin College County residents that are predicted to be here by 2050. My education is not just academic. I've led teams since I was in my twenties. I know what it's like to develop and manage capital and expense budgets to build and restructure organizations, how to read financial statements. More importantly, I know how the games are played. I can sniff out when people are not being honest across a large and complicated organization such as Collin College. I'm currently the Senior Vice President of Business Development for a global technology company, and I sit on our executive board. I manage corporate strategy for this $250 million global business, and I have a team spread across five continents focused on growing our business. Thank you all for your support. I'm Jim Orr and would appreciate your help.
Great. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Place Seven candidates. Now, we'll move on to Place Eight. Bob Collins, over to you.
Thank you very much, Michael. My name is Bob Collins. I'm a candidate for Place Eight on the Collin Board of Trustees. My background includes some prior public service with Plano City Council, where I was named Mayor Pro Tem some years ago. The Collin County Central Appraisal District Board, where I was named Chairman of that for a while. And then the, most recently, the Collin County Economic Recovery Task Force that was organized last year to put together a plan for how we're going to come out of the pandemic. Of course, the most important public service I've been doing is the Collin College Board of Trustees. I was named a Board Member in 1985 when we formed, when we formed the college. And I've been able to, been honored to serve since then. My prior work experience is a Fortune 500 corporate officer, company headquartered here in Dallas, and a senior lecturer and executive in residence for the College of Business at Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. I've taught there for the last 20 years. I currently am teaching as in an adjunct position, went adjunct last year. My education includes a PhD in engineering and an MBA. My emphasis with, with Collin is, has always been accessibility. I have a passion for higher education, been involved in it for a long time. And accessibility is the big issue that I've been addressing here in Collin County for all these years. And this past year, we've been able to open up two new campuses. I have two, two additional campuses on construction. If you look at a map of the county, you'll see that we have just about covered the entire county as far as physical presence of the, of the campuses. And so, we, we are just about there. We've got a little bit more work to do, but we'll, we'll be able to, to, to address it in the next three or four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Place Eight. Now, we'll move on to Place Nine. First up is Andy Harden. Over to you, Andy.
Good morning. As taxpayers from Collin County, you should be proud of Collin College. You paid for it, you paid to bill it, and you should be, make sure that it continues to be as good as it always has been. I'm Andy Harden. I'm running for reelection for the Collin County Trustees, Place Nine. I am a lifelong resident of Collin County. I was born in McKinney, live in Frisco now with my wife, Amy. We have two grown children and two beautiful grandchildren. I'd be happy to show people any pictures if they need proof of that at any point in time. I'm a small businessman. I'm a veteran, former city councilman in McKinney. I served seven years on the State Board of Mental Health and Mental Retardation, and I am now seeking reelection to the Collin College Board that I've been on for almost nine years. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And now, over to Jacoby Stewart. Jacoby? Jacoby, I believe you're on mute.
Good morning, everyone. Today, Jacoby Stewart, and I'm running for Place Nine for Collin College Board of Trustees. I could just say my, my beginning started off very humble and meager. I know what it means to, to, to work from nothing to gain something. My education started when I went to Tarrant County College. I got my dental assistant certificate, which helped me to understand that, you know, I could do more and helped me to take care of my family. I went and got my degree in political science with emphasis on politics at Texas Women's University. And I also obtained my MBA at Texas Women's University with a focus on leadership and business analyst. I think that Collin County is a great jewel within the, Collin College is a great jewel within the county. And I believe that the current Board Members have done a pretty much good job as far as getting the school to where they are now. I believe that right now, we need to have some fresh ideas. We need to have some, some new people who can come. Collin has marketed itself as being one of the schools that's proud of its diversity. At, at this point, I don't think that the student body represents a large minority presence. The faculty doesn't represent the student body as far as diversity. The Board doesn't represent the student body as far as diversity. And therefore, the plan as far as helping students and putting students first have not been the number one priority. So, I understand the plight. I can sympathize and empathize with students, faculty, and staff because I've been in their situations. I never had anyone to give me anything. Everything I had to do, I had to work for myself. I'm a father. I have kids that go to school at Wiley High, and they also go to Collin College. I've been married for a couple of years, for two years. Actually, my wife, she's the reason why I ended up moving out here to Collin College. I mean, to Collin. I've been in Collin.
Jacoby, I'm going to have to cut you out right there. We're at our time. But we'll, we'll have more time to answer off our questions as we keep going. Thank you so much.
All right.
All right. So, let's move on to question number one. So, question one is, what issues? I gotta go. Sorry, mind you, you will have two minutes for each response. So, question one is, what issues will you be focused on if elected to the Collin College Board? We'll start with Place Eight and Bob Collins.
Yeah, I'm on mute, all right.
Okay.
Yes. I guess the, the number one issue that I address just about all the time is accessibility. Making sure that every student in Collin County has an opportunity to access his education if they choose to do so. And so, we'll be, I'll be focusing on that. It's probably my number one priority. The number two priority probably would be keeping our tuition lowest in the state or next lowest in the state and our tax rate next lowest in the state. We have a lot of work to do going forward. The other issue that we're going to be confronted with coming out of the pandemic is new forms of delivery and technology, how we're going to incorporate those, how we're going to implement them, put them in place. We've always been pretty aggressive with technology, but we're going to have, be facing a new challenge. And we're going to see some real structural changes in how we deliver education going forward. And so, we'll be addressing that too as we go, go forward.
Great. Thank you, Bob. And we'll go to Place Nine. Again, what issues will you be focused on if elected to the Collin College Board? Over to you, Jacoby.
My major issue is shared governance. I believe in shared governance. I think that the students, faculty, and staff should be involved in decisions that affect the classroom and affect their lives, free speech. I don't think that, you know, if you're in a position of government, a position of leadership, you make certain decisions. You should not be in a position where you can't be above reproach. So, these things are very important to me, and also taking certain obstacles out the way for students to learn and have an education. So, I just believe that right now, there's a cloud over Collin College, and that cloud needs to be removed, you know, with some nice sunshine, so that, so the students, the faculty, and staff can go to Collin College, relax, get their education, teach, and make the school the best school in the state of Texas.
Thank you, Jacoby. Andy, over to you. Same question.
Can you repeat that question, please?
Absolutely. What issues will you be focused on if elected to the Collin College Board?
Well, the primary question, the thing I'll be focused on is keeping moving forward with the excellent position Collin College is in right now. We have the lowest tuition in the state, which is an incredible benefit to our taxpayers. We offer lots of dual enrollment for high school seniors and, and children that are thinking about going to college, which is an incredible benefit to, once again, to families in Collin County. So, you know, we have excellent facilities. We have incredible faculty. We are, every year, recognized as one of the best places to work. And so, I want to continue the excellent position that we're in. There's lots of things. We have learned a lot during the pandemic of how to deliver education in a variety of ways. And so, I think we can springboard from that knowledge that we've gained and continue to offer the education for our students that they're used to getting. We have numerous U.S. Professors of the Year that we have had. And so, Collin College is actually in an excellent position right now. And the biggest challenge is going to be, how do we keep going in that direction?
Thank you so much. Now, we will go to Place Seven. Jim Orr, question to you.
Sure. So, there's, there's three really big things that we need to focus on. One is the growth in the county. The county's doubled in the last 15 years, and we're scheduled to get up to 2 million residents. Now, what does that actually mean to kind of tag onto Bob's idea of accessibility? When the, when the Plano campus was built, you could get from Wiley and Saxon to the Plano campus in 15 minutes. We sure as heck can't do that now. And so, we need to continue to make sure we cover the geographic, the geographic population in the county as we continue to expand. The changing methods and models that we come up, come up with. I mean, the, the response to COVID certainly exposed the good and the bad about online learning and blended classrooms. And we need to make sure we really focus on the lessons learned there. Not everybody's supposed to be online. Not everybody's supposed to be in person. But we certainly have learned a lot about what that actually means, and we need to focus on making sure that we have the delivery, deliveries necessary in the changing technology landscape. And we, okay, that's my, I.
You have two minutes.
I got it. Good. The third one really is about the programs and responding. You, there was no technical campus six years ago when we started this one now. And some of the things that we've done in terms of providing new paths and opportunities for those that don't necessarily want to do a four-year degree or move on or do transfers, which we're very successful at as well. But, you know, like HVAC, that program, and anybody that's in that program is already employed when they graduate. And that's similar to auto mechanics and others because we're working tightly with the community to deliver what they're looking for. So, maybe that's the big thing. One is about making sure we cover the counting. One is to make sure we really pay attention to the lessons that we learned about modalities. Then the third is to make sure we meet the programs necessary for the community. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jim. And now, Helen, same question.
Um, I, I mean, obviously, Collin's a great place. I used to teach there. They've done a lot of great things, and people, you know, really love that place. But things have unfortunately changed recently, and it's been in the news a lot. I don't know if you guys, everybody out there, I'm sure there's been a lot of bad press, demonstrations at board meetings. The, the faculty are quite frankly terrified. They're afraid for their jobs. They're afraid for their health. I was just chatting with a neighbor who told me that she, her husband knows somebody who teaches at Collin. And when he asked about this race through text, she climbed up. She wouldn't say anything. She said, "I can only talk over the phone." There is a high degree of fear, not even before I announced publicly I was running for this. A, a former colleague texted me asking if there was employment opportunities elsewhere. The, the faculty are really afraid, and the faculty are the ones that make so much of the college experience for a student. I mean, most of the time, who does a student interact with? It's their professors. So, a great professor makes or breaks your college experience. And unfortunately, the, the, the top professors, a lot of professors want to leave. It is no longer a place that people desire to work at because, I'm not sure if you're aware, but a lot of top professors have just been let go for very strange reasons unrelated to job performance. So, addressing that high level of conflict between the faculty and the administration would be, I think, a top priority.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you for those answers. We'll move on to question number two. So, Collin County, as we've heard, is one of the fastest-growing counties in the country. What role does Collin College play in that growth? And how does the college plan on keeping up with the needs for the growing population? Start this question, two minutes, with Place Nine and Andy Harden.
Well, Collin College is very involved in that. Many people don't know that we have almost 60,000 students and an incredible number of campuses to, but if you've been around for a while, you can see that Collin County has grown substantially. Collin College has grown with it. With it, we've opened two campuses last year, the Wiley Campus and the Technical Campus. In the fall of this year, we're going to open two new campuses, two more new campuses in Salina and Farmersville. And so, how we're going to keep up with it, we have continued to try to put facilities in areas that were made us available to all areas of the county. Although, we've also incorporated a lot of effort into virtual learning. That is something else we do to provide ability for students to reach us. And so, you know, we're not just a precursor to a four-year college anymore. Collin College also now offers four-year degrees in nursing and cybersecurity, so that the Collin County residents don't have to leave the county to get a four-year degree. Through the higher education facility in McKinney, you can get four-year degrees and doctorates in, in other, from other colleges. So, I think we continue to try to reach all of the citizens of Collin County in a variety of ways, and that's what we're going to keep doing.
Thank you, Andy. Now, Jacoby, same question. How does the college play in the great growth going on here in Collin County?
The college plays a very important role of helping individuals to change their social imagination. I mean, you have a lot of kids who go to school at Collin College. They work. They come from meager backgrounds, and it helps them to realize that they can be a productive citizen of not only our county, but the state of Texas and America. I believe that, you know, college is a place where students are able to go learn and be able to experience different things. 60,000 students, that's a lot of diversity at Collin College. And I believe that the current administration runs on an inclusive, exclusive eye instead of inclusive wheat, okay? Because I'm out in the community. I work with various different community service organizations. And yes, Collin County, Collin College is, is great. I hear a lot of great things about it, but I also hear the bad press. And the bad press is coming from a certain position of the administration not understanding that emotional intelligence, making decisions that are ego-based. So, once we can take the politics out of education, take bullies out of education, take people who put their egos before students out of the education decision process, we can make Collin County, Collin College better than what it is now. It could rank higher than 268 in diversity. You know, it can, it can get out of being one of the worst schools for free speech in, in America. So, I mean, the college has been great, but there's been a lot of bad press. And I do believe that right now, currently, the current administration has done a good job doing what they're supposed to do as now. But now, we need to make sure that we have some more fresh blood, ideas, and people who have other leadership ideas that can take the college and make them better, especially with the added of four-year degree programs. And I just think.
We're going to cut you off there, but thank you for that response. Thank you. We'll move on to Place Seven, and Helen Chang. How does the college plan on keeping up with all the growing and the growth in the population growth?
Well, I think that's one area definitely that, that, the colleges obviously work towards quite a bit, building a lot of campuses to meet the, the growth needs of this, of the school. And we can't, we, we need to understand how important that is to the greater economy and to employers. It's estimated that across the country, because of the pandemic and the ensuing recession, that Collin, community college enrollment is down 10%, and that is actually going to hurt a lot of employers because that's really affecting their labor force. And so, definitely, community colleges, the, the role that they play in every community is just so important. So, we need to make sure that the college is there to meet the needs and making sure that you're not just meeting the needs by being there, but also providing the right mix of skills. And I know that the college is doing a great job working with businesses and so forth to make sure that the programs are up to date and, you know, what, flexible to meet the needs of what the business community needs. I do understand there's a lack of computer science skills, so maybe we can do more with that with various programming languages, even more like, let, things like Google certifications. I know those are things that businesses really need and are having trouble finding workers with those, those types of skills. So, some things that we can think about there.
Thank you, Helen. And Jim, same question.
Jim Orr. You've heard me say it a couple of times now already. The growth is the, the single biggest issue that we face in this county. I mean, not everybody's so lucky to, to have the continuing expansion of, of the population. Lucky, maybe. Lucky, maybe not. But I mean, with that massive growth comes, comes with a, a lot of challenges. And, you know, this is done with a lot of study. And you can see it. If you take a look at the master plan, the master plan isn't just a list of like the five bullets of places we should build new campuses. The master plan is a full-blown study of population density and changes and where it's coming and where it's going. And what does that mean for traffic drive times? It takes into account what infrastructure is being built out by the county and the state in terms of where the roads are going to be and how that all works. This is not just a simple exercise of throwing a dart on the map somewhere close to where the growth is going to be. This kind of decision-making process that we go through on the Board to define where we're going to put those colleges and how we're going to meet the growth pattern is, is very complicated and requires a considerable amount of experience in strategic planning, investment planning, and those kind of things. So, how are we going to address this one? Well, the way we're going to address it is by building in the right places in conjunction with the county, in conjunction with the research that's coming at us, and to emerge, to emerge from this one by providing the resources where they need to be. That's it. I think we're in good shape for it. We've done the research. We've done the study. You need somebody there that's done this for a career. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And now, to Place Eight, Mr. Collins. I believe you're on mute.
You are correct. Thank, thank you very much. I, I'm going to echo some of the same sentiments that you, that you've already heard. We, we've worked for years to stay ahead of the growth patterns and the growth trends in Collin County. And now, we're going to be faced for the next 10 years with a doubling of the population. So, a lot of the things that we, that we're going to be doing are the same things we've always done, and that is creating master plans that address that, trying to get way ahead of, of the curve. When we initiated our first master plan, we had, we had included Frisco in that master plan. And Frisco at that time was a crossroads in Collin County. That's basically all it was. And so, we were looking well ahead. We're doing it right now with the Salina Campus and the Farmersville Campus on the east side of the county. So, we're trying to get, get, stay ahead of the growth and ahead of the population movement in, in the county. One other thing that we've done, and I think is, is pretty forward-thinking, we own our own wide-area network. We have a wide-area network set up on a ring architecture. So, all of our campuses are collected or connected via this wide-area network. So, we can, we can get a good wide, solid, wideband communication to, to, to every campus all the time. We, interestingly enough, we set up the ring architecture so that we, if somebody cut the line, we still have communication on, on the, on the network. And lo and behold, around our checks center, one day, we had a contractor cut the line on both sides. So, the check was isolated on the wide-area network. But anyway, that's, that's a big asset that we have. It's, that's one of the things that we've done to be forward-thinking in how we operate. So, we're just trying to look ahead all the time with our master plans and working with those. Thanks.
Thank you. And that will conclude our question two. We're moving on to question three.
Hey, Michael, I have a question, if I may interject.
Yes, sir.
There's a, there's some chat going on during this, during this. There's a, there's some chat going on during this, during this, uh, this session. Are we going to address those at the end of the session?
Thanks for that. I don't believe we'll have time in the session, so I'm going to encourage everybody to, if there are questions that come up specifically for you to please reach out to community members. And if you need help getting into contact with someone, Christine can help with that as well. Okay. Moving on to question three, again, two minutes for each, for each answer. In what ways is Colin College evolving to address changing workforce needs? I will start with Jim Orr, candidate for place seven.
And workplace needs is key. As I mentioned, when we ran, first time we ran for this place eight years ago, this is one of the single biggest things. And if y'all remember back then, certain private certification based colleges were having a really hard time and it ended, and actually ended up going under. And, and the reason for that is honestly, trace training is, is actually a public service and should be. And there were lots and lots of discussions about how we were going to do that, what programs we were going to do. And it was decided quite some time ago that we were going to enter into this space and make the investments on behalf of, of the county in order to deliver these benefits or that sounds easy. The next step is how do you actually do this in terms of in partnership with the community? HVAC, you find out things like there's a, there's a company in the county that actually goes to Oklahoma to hire everybody because there's no HVAC training in the county. So you partner with those people and that means your students are employed when they graduate. That's we can, lots of examples that and automotive and welding and all those kinds of things. The second one is what are we actually doing in terms of the four year degrees? You know, the shortage of nurses is really driven what we're doing from a strategic perspective in terms of adding the, the nursing four year degree now. You can get a bachelor's in nursing without ever leaving the county. IT security that we're doing up in Frisco, a lot of great opportunities for doing that expansion.
Thank you, Jim. Helen Chang, same question.
Hi, sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. In what ways is Colin College evolving to address changing workforce needs?
And I'm sorry, I, my internet connection is apparently unstable. So if I go in and out, my apologies.
No problem.
It, it sounds like the college is doing a great job of having, you know, relation, we need to continue to build those relationships, of course, with businesses, local businesses and, you know, finding out what they need and that adaptability and the flexibility of changing up what we offer. Like I mentioned, the, the possibly Google certifications, more computer science background. Those are things that I know we need right now. So remaining flexible and adaptable was really key. I love the Allen Technical Center. I've always thought that this country needed more in terms of apprenticeship, apprenticeship training. I used to work for building trades. I know how important and well paying those types of jobs are. And quite frankly, you know, sitting down in a classroom and going to college is not for everybody. So I think we definitely need to expand programs like the Allen Technical Center with construction jobs and things like that. High skilled positions that, that pay well. So I'm wondering if people can hear me. So, um, yeah, I mean, again, so like, again, just meeting, being flexible and meeting the needs of the, the community organizations and businesses that hire and always being in communication with them. And then of course, we can't always predict what the future will bring and what types of jobs there will be. So teaching our students more of those soft skills. Dealing with like, you know, grit and flexibility and adaptability and overcoming obstacles. These are all like the part of that growth mindset that, that we should all also be teaching a lot of our students.
Thank you, Helen. Place eight next, Bob Collins over to you. What ways is Colin College evolving to address changing workforce needs?
Probably the biggest, biggest impact we've had there is the opening of our technical, technical campus. And you've heard, heard a lot of discussion about that so far and the responses that, that we, we put together. The, the other, the other area that we're working is in our Colin Corporate College where we are constantly working with businesses in the county to put together special courses or any courses they might like in order to address their, their hiring needs for the, for the businesses as well as the development of employees within the companies. So those are the two major areas that we work in. Growth, growth is going to be a major problem. The hiring needs in, in the county are going to be a major problem. I think we're doing a good job of addressing those pretty much with our technical campus and with our corporate college that we have.
Great. Thank you, Bob. And place nine, Jacoby Stewart, same question to you.
Do you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. In what ways is Colin College evolving to address changing workforce needs?
Oh, on my visit to one of the campuses, you know, I've learned that, you know, Colin College has a great a police training facility in McKinney. And it was open to those without experience. You had to had about 20, 21 hours for you to be a campus officer. Currently there may be four black officers, maybe three or four Asian officers. And the rest of the force are Caucasians. The board made a decision to now change it from we, less than 21 hours, no experience. Now they want you to have experience. So now we're hiring a bunch of officers who are either retired, officers who may have been left other police forces because of certain reasons. So when we look at this, 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 the job sources and offering positions for people, you got to start home. There's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of positions at Colin College where we can rehire students that go to school at the school. Instead of trying to find other businesses, we have business at the college itself. Okay. And I think one of those things limiting the students who go to criminal justice at Colin College and they want to be police officers. And now they don't have experience. Now they have to go to Dallas. They have to go to other agencies and get their license and everything. So I'm making, and also make sure that we have, you know, certification programs that are not saturated in the market. There's a lot of saturation in some of these certification programs and these students will not be able to, even if they work 10, 15 years in those areas, they probably won't be able to afford to pay off all their education or to uproot themselves in different areas. So the soft skills, teaching them how to, you know, overcome things, how to be a better person, how to leadership, you know, how to think outside the box.
Thank you, Jacoby. I'm going to stop, I'll have to stop you right there. Thank you so much. Thank you all for those great responses. I, I know we all learned a lot about what you guys are hoping for, for, for Colin College in the future. Now time, it's time for our closing remarks. I'll remind you that these closing remarks, oh.
Hey, Michael, actually we missed Andy. So.
Oh.
Let's get, get over to Andy.
So sorry, Mr. Harden. Over to Andy. My apologies.
That's quite all right. You know, not everyone needs or wants a four year degree. One of the things when the college was started, really it was started with a, a thought toward preparing students for, for your colleges. When we did our master plan some years ago, one of the things we looked at was the need that we saw for technical degrees or technical services for students. And so we built the technical campus in Allen that has just received lots of awards for students that go there. And so they're fantastic programs. If you haven't been to that campus, you need to. Most students, the day they graduate will have a job because they are so well trained at that facility. We also offer police, fire and EMS training and over a hundred certificates that will allow the individuals to take those to start a successful career that they might not otherwise be able to do or were prepared for. And so I think we're doing lots of things to meet the workforce needs. Bob mentioned our corporate college, which has been invigorated with a new leader. And so we are doing great things. Colin County is a fantastic place to live. There's lots of great businesses here and college, college is interacting with those to see what they need. So we can prepare students that go out and get a job. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Everyone answered that question, right? We're all good. All right. Thanks, everybody. All right. And now we will move on to closing remarks that are going to be one minute each. And so then we'll wrap up the session. So I will go ahead and start with place eight. Over to Bob Collins, one minute for your closing remark.
Thank you, Michael. Let me just remind everybody, I have a passion for higher education accessibility. Those are my, my primary, primary focus points. We've got to begin addressing our new strategic plans, which we just covered here recently. Moving forward, those are working, those I'm also a believer, a big believer in strategic planning and working to those plans. Going forward, we've got to look at new forms of delivery and technology. We're going to have to cultivate more partnerships than what we have right now with K, K through 12 and businesses and government throughout the county. We've got to work new programs. We've got two new bachelor's degree programs coming on. Possibility of moving to five bachelor's degree programs depending on what the legislature does. I really believe in excellence and core values. We got to continue focusing on that. Got to keep, continue focusing on keeping tuition and taxes low. Vote for Bob Collins, place eight.
Thank you, Bob. Moving on to place nine, Andy Harden, closing remarks, one minute.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I am Andy Harden, incumbent right now. And I, finishing up my ninth year on the board. I have a long history in Colin County where I was a lifelong resident. I've been in elected office for many years. I have a lot of experience in not only big budgets, but also governmental budgets. Colin College is a big business and it takes that knowledge to be a successful member of the Board of Directors, Board of Trustees. I would enjoy the opportunity to visit with anybody that has any questions. I think it's one of the things we haven't mentioned is our veteran programs that we have, we're recognized for our veteran programs. That's very important to me. I'm Andy Harden, looking forward for your vote in place nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And now with Jacoby Stewart, place nine.
Yes, I'm Jacoby Stewart, running for Colin College Board of Trustees, place nine. And I just want to currently say that, you know, I am for education. I am for the working class man, for veterans. I know that the programs that we have at Colin College are great. But I do believe at this moment, we have current administrations who understand the policy. They understand development. They understand the business of the college, but they lack the emotional intelligence to go out and really truly understand the needs of the students, the faculty and staff. And I am one who get, who put boots on the ground. I go to the campuses. I talk to the people. And using words like most students have jobs when they graduate from Colin College, I'm finding out is not most students. There's certain students. So we have to do a whole lot to change as far as the partnership. We can't partnership with people we don't talk to. We can't partnership with people if we're afraid to. Their ideology is different from ours. It's all about helping the students.
Thank you. I'm going to stop you there. Thank you, Joe. Thank you so much. And now moving on to place seven, Helen Chang, final closing remarks.
Hi, I'm passionate about community colleges. They are so important in helping students from all backgrounds achieve economic security during a time of increasing wealth and income inequality. Helping these students succeed benefits the entire community. The recent negative press attention and protests show we need new leadership at Colin College. The board's main functions are to manage the president, maintain the college's reputation, ensure its financial viability and ensure a positive atmosphere at the school. All of these things are being jeopardized and the board is not holding the president accountable. As a trustee, I will be a voice for the community, students, faculty and employees and represent the diverse and growing population of Colin County. I will advocate for greater transparency of operations. This is key. Accountability and the use of our taxpayer dollars, health and safety of students and employees and protections of free speech in and out of the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. And last but not least, Jim Orr, over to you.
Hey, folks. I, so Colin College currently delivers a high value, low cost education. That's, that's well known. We have the lowest tuition, the second lowest tax rate in the state. It's not an accident and strict oversight from the board needs to be maintained to keep Colin College strong. By the way, we didn't lose enrollment during COVID. We actually grew slightly, not a lot, but at least we didn't drop. This should be a good indicator of our quality. The board must drive this strategy to meet the incredible growth of our community and meet the challenging of education or changing pace of education. As a trustee, it's our job to manage and at an executive level and provide policies that ensure Colin College continues as the excellent resource you all know and love. Anytime you have an organization of around 500 faculty, there's going to be some turnover, but ours is very, very low. We have a continually high ranking in a great place to work and less than 2% of contracts weren't renewed. I have the skills in the background to continue being your trustee. This is not a position where you learn executive management on the job. This is where you bring a lifetime of experience to serve the citizens of Colin County. Jim Orr, running for Colin College trustee, place seven, and I appreciate you both.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you to all of our Colin College Board of Trustees candidates. Appreciate you guys taking the time out of your busy schedules to come sit with us today and answer questions. I'd like to thank our, our sponsor AT&amp;T for allowing this to happen. And to all the folks in the audience and the elected officials, thank you so much for being a part of this today. I'd also like to say to, to make sure to be on the lookout for our upcoming candidate forums and other ballot related events. This Thursday, April 8th, from eight to nine is the Plano ISD Board of Trustees event. Next week on Tuesday, April 13th, we're host from eight to nine thirty, the Plano City Council. Friday, April 16th, from 10:30 to noon, we're holding the, the mayoral round table. And then as well on Monday, April 19th, from eight to nine, coffee with the city about the 2021 bond referendum. So a lot of stuff happening in the next week and, week and a half. As a reminder, early voting is from Monday, April 19th through Tuesday, April 27th. And election day is going to be Saturday, May 1st. So we'll make sure to push all the stuff out to our mailing list. You guys can make sure to register for everything. And have a wonderful day and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.